Get it here next month. Old business. Discussion and consideration of retention pay policy. Can't manage to take a roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize, as did the previous speakers. I don't. With this system, the broadcasting equipment is the property of the North Carolina courses, and so we can't tap onto that for our presentations. Nonetheless, I made a hard copy of each one, board members, well as the esteemed chair in his hearing. And I apologize to the audience. There'll be a copy available of this presentation on the website, and we'll make sure that's available tomorrow. Let's see. Who left up a copy of that presentation? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Board of Commissioners. And I'd just like to say, begin this by saying, you know, you heard Warren get up here tonight and talk about some of the difficulties that he's experiencing within his agency. And I feel like it's my position as county manager to give these department heads the tools they need to do their job and to stay out of the way. Because there's no better in the business when it comes to emergency services than Warren Cave. And my job is to make sure that Warren Cave has everything he needs to do his job successfully. All the tools. In a public sector organization, there's no greater tool than a public servant. And as county manager, if I'm not always advocating to give department heads like Warren Cave, to give the sheriff, to give department heads like Ms. Braswell sitting back here, if I'm not advocating for an environment in which they can successfully recruit and retain highly qualified public servants, or the greatest tool that they can possibly have, then I'm failing to do my job as a county manager. So with that being said, I would like to present to you here tonight, this is not news. This is something that we informed this board in May of 2023 following notification that the American Rescue Plan Act funding can no longer be used for premium pay, that we would be pursuing a way to use the remaining funds to fulfill the intended purpose. And since then, I'm happy to say that administration, working alongside our finance office, our human resources office, the pay plan committee, the North Carolina School of Government, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, pleased to say that we've found a solution, and I'm happy to be here presenting that to you here tonight. As many of you will recall, in October of '21, the Board of County Commissioners unanimously approved using the ARPA funding received by Macon County, the $6.9 million in ARPA funding in its entirety to go towards premium pay. If you'll flip your page. The primary purpose, of course, at this time was to provide additional compensation to these Macon County government employees who allowed this unit of government to continue providing high-quality uninterrupted public services all throughout the pandemic, while simultaneously leading a countywide COVID-19 mitigation effort. Quote comes to mind, I think it was Winston Churchill, "There's nothing more exhilarating than to be shot at with no result." I can't help but think, you know, when we talk about our public safety employees, when we talk about our sheriff's office, when we talk about our EMS, our health officials, especially during this time, you know, when we say we've had a bad day at work, what is a bad day for us, really? It's something totally different than if a paramedic has a bad day at work, the things that they've seen at work, or a sheriff's deputy, the things they have seen at work. So during the height of the pandemic, those on the front lines, they were going in this every day. Nobody, we didn't know anything about COVID at this time. We didn't know what it would do. All we knew, it was, you know, we saw the ticker there every day on TV, just like they did when they got home, but they didn't have a choice to work from home. They couldn't, they couldn't call in sick. They had to be there, they had to go. And they did. Many counties around Macon County, many counties across the state closed their doors, totally went to work from home, virtual. Proud to say that, again, we provided uninterrupted public service throughout the duration of the pandemic. The first-class mitigation effort, we worked with private business to set up a call center. Tammy, we, again, kudos to Mr. Field, right? He, I know he wouldn't want recognition, but we couldn't have made it without him donating his call center to us. We then had to staff and operate that call center using volunteers and county employees. Tammy headed that up. And we're not talking about a small call center, we're talking about a call center that was receiving tens of thousands of calls a day, staffed by 20 folks a day, volunteers and county employees alike cycling those through there. We're talking about a maintenance crew that made it possible to have a drive-through vaccination and testing facility in our public health department that was ran by our EMS and public health over there. This was able to administer tens of thousands of vaccinations and tests to Macon County residents. So, you know, in addition, we recognized at this time, premium pay also allowed us to remain competitive in what had became a booming economy very quickly with the COVID-19 pandemic. You know, this resulted in population growth that we saw in our real estate numbers and our sales tax numbers, creating additional revenue, and it resulted in a tremendously competitive private sector and tremendously competitive public sector alike. But, want to highlight the demand, and Warren mentioned it, the 11% increase in EMS calls for service. During this same time period, 52% increase for service and animal control costs, 24% increase in building permits issued during this time period. Not to mention, most recently, with Medicaid expansion, saw about 3,600 more cases coming onto the caseload of those DSS workers with Medicaid passage in the most recent budget. So today, while much of the public health-related uncertainties associated with the pandemic have subsided, this strong local economy and the substantial increases in demand, which also accompanied it, continue to remain present, and they continue to present us with workforce challenges. Here, I've also included in the right, a little timeline of events there that you're welcome to read, ending with what we're re-proposing here tonight. But let's turn the page. And this slide was taken directly from the October 21 presentation that was given at the time the pay plan was presented, along with the premium pay policy. I stated at that time that the pay plan got us to the five-yard line with respect to our ability to recruit and retain high-quality employees, but I felt like the premium pay put us in the end zone, got us over the finish line, gave us that competitive edge that we needed. Why, I was asked then, how long are these economic conditions going to last? What happens when the money runs out? And I still contend today, as I did at that time, that by December of '24, which is highlighted here in this presentation that was given in October of '21, I still contend that December of '24 provides us with ample time, and we will be in a much better position to answer these questions at that time. So, we'll see by December of '24, the prolonged effect of increased interest rates on things like inflation, how it impacts the housing market, travel and tourism, the economy in general. Now, if the economy continues to remain stable, continues to grow, continues to flourish as it has, then additional revenue will be available. We'll continue to be able, advancing employees through our pay plan, just like the surrounding counties are, just like what we've had to do to remain competitive, just like we were able to do in the fiscal year '24 budget. We'll be able, we'll be able to do that. If the economy goes the other way, well, then competition's going to level off, public sector naturally becomes more attractive in a declining economy, the ARPA funding will be gone, but we will still have used it as we intended to weather the storm with respect to this competitive atmosphere that we're in now. And lastly, certainly not least, it will be no impact on our operating budget. Our operating budget will not have suffered at all. Regardless of the future, we can't lose sight of what is important today. And as for today, across the board, demand for services in Macon County continues to grow. Heard Mr. Cave stand up here. At the same time, the money in the local economy continues to flow, competition between this organization and public and private sector employers alike is stronger today than it ever has been. If you could flip the page. And we've done an excellent job, I don't want to take away from the excellent job that we have done in maintaining our pay plan. Four and a half percent, we gave a step increase in a cost of living adjustment in the last budget, but as you can see here, you know, whether you're talking about, when you're talking about public sector agencies, you know, a rising tide lifts all ships. You see the 2024 state budget increases, 7% state employees, 7% non-certified school staff, bus drivers 9%, highway patrol officers 11.1%, retirees, those on fixed incomes, 4%. So, you know, that is a competitor as well, with the exception of the retirees, that we're having to compete with on a public level with respect to the state budget. If you look at your chart on the right here, what I've done is I've taken the latest information available from the school of government and taken nine positions that represent a cross-section of our county services that we provide. I have, using that school of government data, compiled the average salary for Cherokee County, Jackson County, Graham County, and Transylvania Counties. Those were the counties in and around our region that were readily available, and that data was available for, in this school of government dataset. And as you will see, you know, we've done an excellent job implementing the pay plan and moving, and keeping up with moving people through the pay plan, but so have all these other counties. If you look at this chart on the right, we're neck and neck with them. Matter of fact, among these nine positions here, Macon County is 0.7% below the regional average. We're right in line. That's, you know, if you took, put three more positions in there, we might be neck and neck, but bottom line is, we're right in line. Same with the state budget here. So that rising tide lifts all ships, and in doing that, I believe today, just as I did in October of '21, that our pay plan still puts us on the five-yard line. And I'm standing before you here today to once again ask to take it in the end zone with the premium pay. I believe it is more important today, and it is, with this retention pay and our ability to, to use this funding to recruit and retain employees, is more important today than it was when it was originally enacted in October of '21. Why do I believe that? It's simply because that public and private sector organizations across the country have spent billions of dollars doing the same thing. If you'll flip your page. So in this chart, if you look here at the, this is nation of mine, and this gives the ARPA funding that was used in the last quarter of 2023 through July by counties and municipalities, states, over 250,000 in population that received over $10 million in American Rescue funds. It also includes an annual expenditure within each of these categories for counties, states, tribal entities less than 250,000 in population that receive less than $10 million in COVID-19 funding. So it's a broad cross-section of what's going on across the country. Here, and these are in billions, by the way. So let's just briefly look at these and see what's going on. 17.7 billion in housing. Where do you see that at? You see that large projects primarily centered in urban areas. I know Macon County here, we have recently, the Housing Department received grant funding to conduct a housing needs assessment to identify, you know, where our housing shortfalls are in Macon County. That will be completed in six to eight months from now. So again, you know, you look at that timeline, these funds have to be expended by December of '24. When you look at infrastructure at 31.2 billion there, again, we're talking about a lot of big cities, a lot of big states, and a lot of big water and sewer projects. Macon County does not have water and sewer projects because we don't have a water and sewer system. The state of Arizona, for instance, created a $200 million water conservation grant fund. State of South Carolina invested 1.5 billion across the state, 200 water and sewer infrastructure projects. That, things like that are included in that 31.2 billion. What's also included in that 31.2 billion is $238 million that went to the state of North Carolina that later became the great grant funds. As we discussed in October of '21, Macon County statutory authority to enact anything with respect to broadband, we have a very limited sandbox that we can play in there. But we were able to take $200,000 of our ARPA funding, and we were able to leverage $6 million in this great grant funding, right here under this infrastructure, that 31.2 billion. We were able to leverage $6 million of that money to provide broadband. We've heard the lady from Frontier here tonight expand broadband in Macon County to nearly 3,000, over 3,000 residents, fiber internet. So we've taken advantage of this category. 12.8 billion has been used to support workers across the country. And yes, this includes premium pay. And you don't have to go that far to find somewhere that is doing it. Here's an article from December 8th, a quote from the December 8th edition in 2021 of the Smoky Mountain News. "We're doing what Macon and a lot of other counties are doing by offering premium pay," King said, and that's Kevin King, the manager's of Swain County. "It's horrible the amount of money we got. We couldn't get into the assistance programs for water and sewer, of course, fair accounting. Improving pay for employees sends a safer route, especially since the county has struggled to recruit and retain employees the last few years. Just like Macon County, Swain County continued to lose public health and public safety employees to surrounding counties that could offer more competitive pay." So that was, that article highlighted what Swain County was doing, but we're not just talking about Swain County, talking about Clay County, Graham County, Cherokee County, Town Franklin, all these, all these places that surround us and municipalities that lie within our jurisdiction have used a portion or all of their ARPA funding towards things like premium pay and employee compensation. So again, as I go back to the first statement I made, as county manager, I think it's my job to give our team the best shot we got to recruit and retain highly qualified employees. And again, that's why I'm saying that we need to stick with the course, as was originally intended, for these funds, because you don't have to go far. A matter of fact, be in your car about five minutes to 15 minutes and get to somewhere that's doing it. Public health response, 12.1 billion. Again, as much of the public health-related instances with this pandemic decline, and we continue to improve, I expect that that category of funding will decrease as well. Small business growth, $5 billion. If you will recall, Macon County started a small business loan fund. We put $250,000 in fund during the pandemic there, at the height of the pandemic, opened it to all small businesses. I think we had less than $30,000 that was applied for out of that small business loan. So again, we've touched the infrastructure fund with our ARPA funding, we've touched this small business economic growth fund. Lastly, the revenue replacement. Counties like Jackson County have used their ARPA funding for revenue replacement, and many counties have, as you'll notice, it dwarfs for this reporting period here, all these other expenditures at 108 billion, and that's simply because it just offers so much flexibility. In other words, you can, the American Rescue Plan permits you to use this funding to cover certain expenditures, which then frees up county money to be used for other things, which is exactly what, that we're proposing to do with here tonight. And I can't tell you, you know, there's a, there's a, it is kind of misleading because this supporting workers category at 12.8 billion, I don't know how much of that 108 billion has gone towards supporting workers, same as Macon County is proposing to do here tonight, but I know that it is happening because, like I said, we were able to discuss and be walked through the process of this with the North Carolina School of Government and the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, as I'm sure that they have walked many other counties and municipalities under their, through the same thing, just as other counties or other states have done for counties across the country. So I do know that's going on. So if we step out and then look at all the ways that we can use this funding, you know, you see that billions of dollars have went in to supporting the employees and supporting workers, and that has trickled down to Macon County, and I again believe puts us in the position that we must do the same thing. Now, when you look at this chart here on the right, you see all of your public school units across the state of North Carolina. Expenditures through September 30th, 4.7 billion in total expenditures, nearly 3 billion of that has been spent on salaries and benefits. And here in Macon County alone, the school system has received approximately 16.3 million in ESR funding, 9.7 million of that has went towards salaries, benefits, bonus pay, supplemental pay, et cetera. And that is not counting a payment that is scheduled for December of '23. So, but Macon County is not alone, Macon County school system is not alone. Again, doing the same thing, we're having to rise with the tide. So as we look at the chart below that, nonprofits, same story, 17.5 million grand total funds received here through non-3023, 10.4 of that has went to salaries and benefits. And lastly, lovely with the private sector, loans for the paycheck protection in Macon County today have totaled approximately 33 million. And those are loans ranging from $1,000 to $1 million. Again, I feel like that this is more important today because today, we're not the only ones doing this. So as we move along, and we're getting near the end, you can, you can flip your page there. This is the last slide. Our ability to have a qualified dispatcher on the other end of the line, when you call 911, that matters today. Our ability to be able to roll five ambulances if we have the need here in Macon County at one time, that matters today. If that contractor on that job site building that house and needs that building inspection to be able to move forward, that matters today. If sewage is ankle-deep in the jail and has to be dealt with by our maintenance guys and gals, that matters today. When you want to throw your trash away, you want to be sure Mr. Burkes has got that gate open. That matters today. The plan I'm proposing here tonight is to stick with the original plan. It's the only plan we've ever discussed. It allows us to remain competitive with respect to recruitment and retention of employees by using the remainder of our ARPA funds to offset expenditures within the operating budget under the revenue replacement category as permitted by the ARPA funding guidelines. This previously appropriated county revenue will then be freed up and will fund the recruitment and retention policy through October of '24, that is the same time the original premium pay policy would have ended. So sure, this is a win. It's a win for the transit driver that's now, for this time period, going to be paid $17.20 an hour instead of $15.20 an hour. It's a win for that maintenance worker, it's going to be paid $16.50 rather than $14.50 for the hour work you're in this time period. But you ask yourself, you know, with the problems we're facing, the circumstances we're facing, the timelines we're facing, just like I said in October of 2021, I'll say in November of 2023, it's the best way to use these funds. It's a win, because it's not only a win for the employee, it's a win for the organization. You can never go wrong when you invest in your most valuable asset, and that's what these, that's what these men and women are, their most valuable asset. They took us through some of the hardest times we've ever faced, and they're still, you know, we're still out there, they're still out there grinding, and we're still out there doing our job, and we're still having to compete. We're still having to compete, day in and day out, it's just the times we're in. And again, nobody has a crystal ball, we can't predict the future, but again, talking about what we need to do today. So it's a win for the organization, we can continue delivering high-quality public services at the lowest tax rate in the state of North Carolina. So it's a win for the taxpayer as well. And last but certainly not least, $350 billion in American Rescue funded was put into the economy with the American Rescue funds. The intent of that money was to get put back into the economy. And by putting this in the hands of Macon County employees, they're directly injecting it into the local economy here in Macon County. So it's a win for the employee, it's a win for the organization, it's a win for the taxpayer, it's a win for the local business owner. And with that, as you will see here, my manager's recommendation, the three things I'll be asking for approval here tonight would be approval of the recruitment and retention pay policy, which is, it mirrors the premium pay policy, with the exception of where the funding will come from. We'll approve the grant project, or we'll request approval for the grant project ordinance for Macon County American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, drawn by our state and local fiscal recovery funds, that's why we have to submit to the Department of Treasury. And lastly, we'll approve the budget amendment, we will request approval of the budget amendment that transfers 1.8 million in American Rescue funds to the general fund, housing fund, and solid waste fund to cover salaries and fringes under the revenue replacement category for fiscal year '24. Thank you. I'll be happy to take it.
Gentlemen, you've heard the presentation was approved of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the manager's recommendation, stick with the plan of the approved, approved, approved situations there. That's a recruitment and retention policy presented tonight, nowhere to 14th, 2023.
Motion on the floor.
Same.
Same. Motion to sit. Discussion.
Chair, let me, let me jump in on discussion here. Mr. Robinson.
Yes, sir. You know, when I saw this agenda, it kind of made me think about reaching in a five-gallon bucket full of rattlesnakes for a night crawler. I mean, that's what this looks like. I had more anxiety about this item than any other. And the reason is because I have my own employees that I have to go live in the face tomorrow morning that worked through COVID and they worked through all this. But what, your presentation just hit me with deja vu. We stepped through this two years ago. Three members on this board already approved it. Am I, am I wrong in saying that?
That is correct.
Why are we back?
We are back due to a change in the Department of Treasury's guidelines, the final rule that forced us to have to discontinue premium pay as it was intended, as we had originally went through with it, and we had to then go back and pursue doing it through the revenue replacement category.
To me, I mean, I'm in favor of this, it's old business. Like I said, I already supported it two years ago. I mean, nothing changes, and I'm going to pledge money to employees and then take it back now and try to reappropriate, so I don't, I don't work like that. But I just wanted to make sure that this is not a new.
No.
That, that's where I was going.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Let's look here. Wait around one again. Mr. Manager. And when these funds were approved by the federal government, they were sent to Macon County, the Board of Commissioners approved giving almost $7 million to county employees for $2 an hour premium pay. And in April the 10th, 2023, the federal government says, these funds can no longer be used for premium pay. And so I've done a lot of research on this as well. Premium pay initially, the federal government authorized local governments to pay out premium pay to eligible workers who performed essential work during the COVID-19 pandemic. Premium pay was intended to compensate essential employees for heightened risk due to COVID-19. As April 23, the federal government has said, the local government may no longer, may no longer expend ARPA funds on premium pay because the pandemic is over. No premium payments can be made to employees after that date. If the local government continues to make premium payments, they are in violation of federal law. This is a risk that the U.S. Treasury could claw back any funds expended on premium pay after April 23 cutoff. If this happens, the local government would be required to reimburse Treasury for all premium payments made after April 23 deadline. Only eligible workers who performed essential work during the pandemic were eligible for premium pay when the ARPA award was first made. An eligible worker is a low-to-moderate-income employee, generally those who earn less than $75,000. Essential worker is work that involves regular in-person interaction with the public. Therefore, only those low-to-moderate-income Therefore, only those low-to-moderate-income employees who continue to work in the office or interface with the public during the pandemic were performing essential work. And what you're asking this board to do, in my mind, is manipulate the funds from the general fund to take that much money out of the general fund and replace it with the ARCA funds so that we can pay this $2 an hour. Now, let's just go, let's just go on the end of this a little bit deeper. Because I asked specific questions. If the funds cannot be used for employee premium pay, what can the funds be used for now? These funds can be used for any capital improvement project. It can be used for anything that the county government needs to spend money on except premium pay. It cannot be added to an employee's salary. It can't be added.
John, this, the final rule that you're taking excerpts out of, it's a lot like reading the New Testament. You can't just read one verse here and one verse. You've got to take it in its entirety. So, what you're saying about the premium pay, the interactions with the public, there's another part to that. They also, it's the physical handling of items that were handled by, or are handled by, that were handled by, or are handled by patients, public, or coworkers. So, not only were those frontline employees that were out there, but they were sending up the paperwork in interdepartmental mail. Everybody was touching that. Everybody on every office interacts with the public or other coworkers, or handles materials distributed from the public or other coworkers. So, every employee qualified as an essential employee. That policy was approved. That policy is legal. What we're doing now with these funds, proposing it to do with revenue replacement, we're not the only county that's done it. We're not the only county that's doing it. It's being vetted through the school of government. It's been vetted through the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, and it's perfectly legal, what we're doing with these funds.
Well, sir, this information came from an attorney at school of government.
Okay, well.
Today.
Okay, my information's right.
Okay.
It's about like, you know.
Well, I'm just telling you what the school of government is doing with these questions.
Right.
Now, the whole thing is, the federal government gave this money. The federal government suspended this money. Now, we were talking just a few minutes ago about the state don't have the money to build roads. They give 58% of the state budget to the school system in the state of North Carolina. You know what? If that keeps happening, everything's going to fall apart. We cannot spend every penny that we get trying to make employees happy.
That's not what we're doing.
I'm sorry. That is, you're talking about, we need to be, we need to take our staff, and we need to make these people where we can be competitive. The government is being competitive on the taxpayers' back.
That's right.
End of story. It isn't happening.
And we're the, so we're the least competitive in the state of North Carolina then?
The least competitive?
Yeah, so, because we have the lowest tax rate in the state. So, we're doing less, we're doing less of it than anybody.
We've got a $65 million budget, sir.
Yeah.
I've looked at eight, eight budget cycles since you've been here.
Yeah.
And it has increased $25 million. And the only thing the taxpayers have gained by this $25 million in the budget is higher salaries and a larger government. That's what we've gained because our county's falling apart.
Well, that's, yeah, in your eyes.
No, sir. In most everybody's eyes.
I think we've got a pretty good county.
I think we've got some great counties.
Hell, we did.
Oh, yeah.
We got paid.
And you also told us, told us in a meeting that we're 50% overstated.
I didn't say that in a meeting.
Okay.
Come on, John.
Derek, I'm going to tell you something, man. I'm going to tell you something. You have called me a liar four times in open session. So, tonight, I ask for your resignation.
I thought you were lying right now. You are wrong.
I am a liar.
How am I ever called a liar?
That's enough. Hold it down. Hold it down. This is going to be civil, or I'll ask the sheriff to remove anyone that don't comply.
If you can stand there tonight and say that you were not in a meeting with the chairman of this board, the county attorney.
John!
And tell us.
I'll say, I'll tell you that. I said, hey, you know what, John? Here's the deal. If you can get three more commissioners, if you can get two more commissioners to, if you don't like the job I'm doing, or you think that poorly of who I am, or you've questioned my character, and you can get two more commissioners to vote with you, you can have my resignation tonight.
It makes no difference to me, sir.
I'm not going back with you.
Well, that's fine. But I'm just telling you, the budget of Macon County has increased under your watch. $25 million. We need new schools? I mean, the center, the center of county government, we met out there, Town Square right here, that's center of county government. And it looks terrible. Why don't we spend money to fix the things that we need? These kids don't have a track to run on. These kids.
You're not moving in the budget.
Would you please?
Figure out, Brad.
Figure out.
That's the chairman's decision. We request that. I will listen. But yeah.
No, I mean, there's plenty of stuff right here that the county, the school of government sent us. What are the original uses for? And here, here is, all this stuff came from the school of government today, and it specifically says, "You can no longer use these funds for retention pay or premium pay based on the federal government." And it says right here, "If that is, if that is done, you are in violation of federal law."
What has been proposed and what has been set, a motion has been made on and seconded is completely legal? And if it is illegal, then I guess you'll fire me anyway.
Now, the whole thing of it is, they're wanting to take the money out of the general fund and replace it with.
We're using it as revenue replacement. We're replacing expenditures that qualify for revenue replacement under the American Rescue Plan. And we're then using the county money, just as I stated, to reinstate what is now our retention pay policy through the remainder of the period, which is October of 24.
And it specifically says, "You cannot use these funds for increased salaries."
We're not. We're using county funds.
Okay.
So, both of you went to the school of government. Both of y'all went to the school of government, but I'm hearing two different answers. Is that right? Would you like to?
I'm checking.
Just ask the question.
That is the information, yes. I've got the email verification from Karen Malonzi. We, Tammy can patch for it. I mean, you know, but at the end of the day, I just, you know, I just, I don't know. It's concerning that.
Does that, does that answer your question? Were there counties who paid this money out in full?
Yeah, I think, if I'm not mistaken, Swain County, from that article, I know that a lot of counties paid lump sum.
Okay, those counties that paid for the lump sum, when the government stopped this back in April, whenever that was, did they go back and collect that money back from the employees?
No.
If that money was promised to them, give them the money. Bottom line. If the board had a problem with it, they shouldn't have voted that direction to begin with.
Different board.
What are you asking?
Just making a comment.
Let me add a little bit to it. Hazel mentioned earlier about the vice, divisive pockets we needed to unite and we do. And Chairman, I want to make this company's sharing and express my views on this. Back in October of 21, I've been on this board for a number of years, been through a couple of pay study reviews, and I've always hesitated to commit taxpayer money. I'm very cognizant of where our money comes from. But in leading up to October of 2021, we were engaged in a salary review process. And I was, I was the county manager of people numbers of times on this thing. And I was assured, that was a $2.3 million adjustment of salaries. And I asked Mr. Rowland specifically, "Does this make us competitive?" Oh, absolutely. That was not only you, but those members of the board. This is going to make us competitive, and that's what we're interested in, is being competitive in recruitment, retention, whatever. And so, I was proud to vote for that. And we came into that meeting in October. And I'll just share a personal story. Full in parking lot of this school. So, we come in, it's presented our salary review. I was excited. We were doing something for the employees to make their salaries competitive. We passed it, I think, probably past you now, somebody at the room. And I said, "Well, bro, bro, something right here." Immediately, the salary review committee got up and said, "Well, that puts us on the," after being told repeatedly, "This makes us competitive." The salary review committee representatives got up and said, "That puts us on the goal line. We need to get in the end zone." Boom. Man, something hit. I said, "Go away, man." Sit back in my chair and said, "We have $6.9 million that we want to spend and out on salaries." It was like I'd been kicked. I've been, I took some licks in my life, and I'll take more probably. But I've never had the feeling I had that night. I had been misled. The wind came out of me. I was physically sick. $6.9 million. I asked the question, "Is women, guys, women? Am I the only guy in this room that doesn't know anything about this?" Everybody was just looking around like I was some kind, I was just a shadow. $6.9 million. I had no opportunity, none, to discuss. Maybe what we used it for in there was probably, it could have been a high percentage that wrong. A lower response. Completely ignored. This is, this is the best thing since pockets on a T-shirt. I was defeated. I sat back. Man, this, I can't believe, I'm an elected official, and I'm being told that we're going to use $6.9 million of taxpayer money. Completely defeated. Completely. I want to go home and just quit. And I slumped back in my chair and relooked, threw my hand up when it came for vote. I was defeated. I don't know if those board members here, but I've been told that nobody in the room knew about it. I don't buy that story. So, this thing was approved, I got, took my licks, moved on, proud the boys got the race. Then, in April of this year, the federal government said stop this premium pay. I thought this pony had been put to bed. I thought it was over with. Here we are again, reliving the same thing. And as an elected official, I could care less if I win, lose, vote, whatever I did. I have the authority. I think this board as a body has a fiduciary responsibility of any money that comes into Macon County, that we at least have options on how that money is to be spent. There's documents being passed around here, I do not know. But since we've opened this thing back up, and we want to skin this thing again, here is my request. I want to know how much money came into Macon County through the ARCA, the ESER, whatever, any kind of taxpayer money that came down from the government. I want to know the total amount. I want to know how it was expended. Doesn't have to be, I don't want a elaborate spreadsheet. I want one sheet. How much money did we get? I never had any vote, any opportunity to offer suggestions as a resident, as a taxpayer, as an elected official, as a businessman, how we could use it. I've earned money from $10 to $20 million. I want full accounting, I want that presented to us at the December meeting. And then, all on you, Mr. Manager. This is taxpayer money. This is, this is not free money. And again, it may be the best thing, but I was assured, and I voted confidently, that we were passing a salary statute to make us competitive. And then, I turned around and just got slapped down with no input. Anyhow, anyhow, this board is going to move forward. We are in charge, the finances are discounted, and we can have it down here, what can we do, what can we do? Here we are getting to that. We, I have, I don't have any options. I met with the manager of the day, and he said, "We're going to bring this back up." And I said, "Derek, I'll do it. It's dead." It died April the 20th, when the federal government said this cannot be used for premium pay. But I said, "If you want to bring this up, Derek," and as the, as the chairman of the board, I could have, I sent it to the general. I mean, I don't, I let it go. If it's on the alley to fly, I could have stopped this thing. But, let's get it out. Let's go ahead and let's reveal this whole thing. I had to share. This has been very divisive. I'm still getting texts from employees, "Give us our money back." Well, then, it was your money to start with. It was what we were told we were going to spend up, not what we were asked we were going to spend up. It was one option. What other options did we have? I still do not know. So, since we brought this thing up, I will put it to bed. And if we're going here tonight, I'll lose. I cannot vote to spend this money without knowing and exploring what options. If we're going to use all that money to do capital improvements in this county, that would have been a great, a direct benefit to every taxpayer in the county.
Yeah.
Never was discussed to, never was considered an option. So, that's my take on this thing. My vote will be a solid no. Not on saying, "Hey, the county employees don't deserve this money." If they're not being paid a competitive salary, when we did that salary review study, somebody is not doing their job. That's just bottom line. Are we going to keep crunching it up with this money? When this runs out in 2024, we're back to square one. Our employees are underpaid. Well, it's not my responsibility of this board to decide what the salaries are. That's why we have people to do this work. So, I'm sorry, and I told Eric that, it's nothing personal, Derek, but if you're hoping this is going to skin this thing back, we'll skin it back. And that's where I got hooked in on this COVID, whatever funds it was, gee whiz, I don't even know how much we spent. But as long as we keep throwing taxpayer money away, we got $33 trillion that is going to, oh, yeah, it's fed, well, that's my grandkids there. So, I've asked the request for you, Mr. Rowland, bring it back to us, and at this year, I won't fully count him. And we, any more comments, gentlemen?
I'd like to, I'd like to just add on to, because I know I come across with this stuff about county employees and employees. As someone who's been self-employed for the last 36 years, I understand employment, I understand you take care of your employees or you don't have employees. But somewhere along the line, there's a limit on how much you can take care of salaries and everything else. We do have a great group of people in Macon County working for this county. And I agree with you 100%. If we had a salary study and it failed, we ought to be going after whoever did the study and allowed that to fail. I'm not against county employees. There is nothing. When I walk through the boardroom, I'm all business. I have no personal agenda against anyone, but I will conduct business when I walk out of that boardroom at the end of the meeting when it's adjourned. I'll go have lunch with you, I'll go have dinner with you, I'll go have coffee with you, or whatever. Mr. Commit, Manager, there is nothing about my comments personal to you. I know what I have been told by you, and if you think that, that I'm deaf, I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman knows exactly what you said. The county attorney knows exactly what you said. And, and there's some members in the general public who've also commented that too. And.
So, John, in one breath, you say that the county employee salaries have increased more than, than anyone, than, over eight years than anything under my watch, and then the next breath, you say, "I think that we got too many."
No, the whole thing is, I said, "The budget has increased $25 million in eight years, or nine years under your watch." And as far as I can see what's going on in this county, we have gotten bigger government and bigger salaries. And so, we had the largest budget increase in Macon County history this year. Where did most of that money go?
Where it needed to.
To the salaries of the employees.
That's right.
That's exactly what I'm talking about. While our citizens out here are struggling to pay their grocery bills and everything else with no consideration, I have never, since I've been on this board, heard you say one word in concern about the taxpayers of this county.
But you got the lowest tax rate and say, "We are, everything we do is built on efficiency." And we take pride in that fact, John.
If we clarify that lowest tax rate, we have the lowest per, property tax, but when you figure into fighter tax.
We're still in the top 5%.
We're still in the top 5, we're not the lowest.
Yeah, maybe. I don't know. It's being district by district.
Yeah, well, just one thing, everyone, one question. Did all employees receive the $2 per hour?
All full-time and part-time, yes.
Regardless of.
Yes.
What label we're on. All gentlemen, we've heard discussion. And what you say on the floor, all the favors in that discussion? All the favors signify raising your right hand. All the votes like that. Here's speech, please. We'll take a five-minute break.